All right, I guess we're ready to go. All right, we're gonna call the October 13th, 2022 zoning board of appeals meeting to order. For 7:00 PM on the agenda, we have old business and new business, which is approval of the minutes for August 18th, September 1st and September 8th. I think we're gonna postpone that until the next scheduled meeting, which I believe is November 10th, 2022, at 7:00 PM. Move on to our first petition. I'm gonna read that petition. The town of Abington zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, October 13th, 2022, at 7:05 PM at the Abington Town offices at 500 Lenowitz Way, Abington, on the petition of Barry L.
McMenamin.
McMenamin. Thank you. At 9 Hunts Pond Lane for an appeal of the commissioner's permit. Decision 71922 for a special permit under 175-32 dot 1 to allow an accessory apartment, special special permit 175-35 to allow a cabana footing site prep in the floodplain. Wetlands Protection District waiver of the environmental impact statement on to construct an 840 square foot prefab cabana accessory apartment at 9 Hunts Pond Lane. This property is located on Accessors Map 13, Lot 96, in the R30 zone. Is there anyone here?
Mr. Riley?
Could you just state your name for the
Sure, for the record, my name is Attorney Sean Riley, 500 Washington Street, representing the applicant Barry McMenamin. Just for the record, there's a public hearing scheduled for 7:05. So I'm not sure that we can actually start until 7:05 in case there's any late arriving butters. I don't know if the board, I know the board doesn't have any other business to do right now. I could suggest you might recess for three minutes and then we can start back up again, but.
Well, can we just stop right here? And I've never had a problem with we just move right along. That's what we usually do. You could announce it at 7:03 or whatever, that we're starting the petition.
Well, all due respect, it's a post-a-public hearing. You can start after the public, the time scheduled in the notice, but you can't stop before, because you have to protect the rights of an butler who might be arriving in the parking lot right now.
All right.
I'm free to start if you like.
What time is it?
7:03. Who votes for two minutes?
How about that rain, huh? What about those Red Sox?
Mr. Chair, if I could suggest, two minutes of dead air is a long time on cable. You could take a vote to recess for two minutes, so cable could stop the tape for you.
Probably by the time we take the vote.
Whatever you'd like.
Come back on.
That's fine.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Whenever you declare it 7:05, I'm ready to go.
Sounds good.
I'd like to stare at our smiling faces for, you know, minutes at a time.
Maybe they can edit it. I don't think we're live tonight, so. All right, looks good. It looks like we're 7:05.
Agreed.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, my name is Attorney Sean Riley, 500 Washington Street, representing the applicant, Mr. Barry McMenamin, and the McMenamin family. They own the property at 9 Hunts Pond Lane in Abington. There are three things before you tonight. An appeal of the building inspector's decision, which denied a building permit for a pool cabana. Also, a request for a special permit under Section 17532I to allow an accessory apartment. And also, a special permit under 17535 for, to allow for work or activity within the local floodplain and wetlands protection overlay district. I can give you a back, a little bit of background. The McMenamins applied for a building permit for a cabana as an accessory building to their house, their single-family house, and their swimming pool, which already exists. They started the process about in March. Their proposal was to replace the existing cabana or pool house that's on the property as we, as we speak now. We submitted, and they submitted, a plan prepared by Carl Garvey dated March 1st, 2022, which is part of your package, showing that the proposed pool house slash cabana, or as we call it, an accessory building under the zoning by law, is obviously situated at the minimum, at least 10 feet off of any lot line. This is a 14.4 acre piece of property that the McMenamins own, so they have, sorry, 11.4 acre property on this street here at Hunts Pond Lane. So they have plenty of room out back there, and as I said, they're already living there with a swimming pool and with a cabana out back. The existing house in which the family lives in is a five-bedroom, four-and-a-half-bath house. Barry and his wife Jean.
Do you know how many square feet is of?
It's in the accessories information that was submitted there. I want to say it's a little bit over 3,000 square feet, I believe. Barry and his wife Jean lived there along with their, their son Brett and his wife Elise, and their kids, or Barry and Jean's grandkids. Barry and Jean are snowbirds. They tend to spend Florida, spend the winters in Florida, and they come back up to Abington during the warmer weather and enjoy the pool with their grandkids and with their son and daughter-in-law. The building permit again was filed. They went through the process of trying to submit the supplemental app, information, whatever the building department needed some more details, so they were working it out for quite some time. And if I could, I'd like to just kind of summarize, and I can refer to my application. The applicant's proposed to replace the existing cabana with a new larger prefabricated cabana, an accessory building, with all the work to be performed outside of the wetlands buffer area with no disturbance of wetlands. The proposed octagonal cabana would contain approximately 840 square feet, including a living TV area, bathroom, refrigerator and kitchenette, and an exercise room. The submitted proposals did not include any bedroom or any cooking facilities. On July 19th, 2022, the building department denied the special permit in writing, alleging that the proposed cabana was a quote "potential dwelling unit", despite not having the required cooking facilities or sleeping facilities as defined in our bylaw. The applicant believes that the denial was a faulty decision which is not consistent with our zoning bylaw. The cabana met the definition of accessory building. It did not conform to the bylaw's definition of a dwelling unit, and the building permit for the proposed cabana should have been approved. We ask therefore that the zoning board find that the cabana is an accessory building, and thus that they approve the appeal of this decision and allow the building permit for the cabana, the accessory building, to be issued. I submitted a series of documents with, in my package to you, and I would refer you to the floor plan of the cabana, which is attached as Exhibits D and E in the application package. You can see it's a, it's a nice cabana. It's an expensive cabana. If you're on page D, the proposed accessory building is shown there. The architects, the prefabricated company has drawn it up for you. It shows the media center, which is a living area with a television, with a couch. It shows a kitchenette area, which shows a refrigerator, a bar sink, typical pool cabana that you might see in other people's yards, but larger, obviously. Has an exercise room, has a half bath for kids running out of the pools. They don't have to run into the house. Even has a sauna and a shower in there. Outdoors, a patio next to it. It's got a hot tub. And obviously, this would be a place where they probably have a grill outside, flip some burgers, and then enjoy it out of the pool, or they could obviously enjoy it in the house if they wanted to. Accessory building is defined in our bylaw, and that is shown in Exhibit F. Under 1754, an accessory building is a detached building, the use of which is customarily incidental and subordinate to that of the principal building, and which is located on the same lot as that occupied by the principal building to which is the accessory.
Mr. Riley, one second. You're asking for an accessory apartment, correct?
I'm asking for two things, really three, if you include the floodplain special permit.
But you, it says here in, that's what it's saying.
Where are you looking, sir?
I'm looking at the tonight's agenda, right over here.
Then you have to back up. We're looking for an appeal of the building inspector's decision where he said, well, the building department found that it was not considered an accessory building, that it was considered to be a dwelling. And if that's the case, if it's a dwelling, then you need a special permit for it to be an accessory apartment under 17532I.
So an apartment is not like an in-law, is that what you're trying to say?
No, it is. An in-law, our bylaw doesn't use the word in-law. It says accessory apartment.
So what we're looking at is the plans that you have, the plans that you have with the, with the bedroom.
Nope. I'm, I'm asking for two separate permits. The McMenamins would like a decision from this board that the building permit for the accessory building, the cabana, should be issued. And if so, he then has a right to build or to order his cabana, period. He also is filing separately a request for a special permit to have, to allow him to instead install a accessory apartment, which would require him to change the initial design of the cabana, because he would have to add a bedroom, he would have to add permanent cooking facilities and all that. So it's two separate permits. And he asked, well, why are you doing that? I said, because he doesn't know which way he's gonna go now. In fact, the building inspector suggested that you could, if, if you want to go with the in-law, you have to apply for a special permit under Section 32I. If you want to say it's a cabana, then you have to appeal my decision and say it's an accessory building. We're doing both, and then it becomes the McMenamins' right to decide which way that they want to spend their money. They want to go with their original proposal, which was a cabana with no bedroom, or he could utilize his rights, if the board grants the special permit under 32I, to authorize in-law apartment. He would then have to go back to his contractor and submit new plans to the building department. It's their option to do that.
Yeah, you're asking for a lot. I mean, you're asking for, for us to give them the choice to do either or.
That's not a lot. It's something that the building inspector and I had talked about, and it's something that he had suggested in his letter, which a copy of that is in there, your, his August letter.
I did read yours.
Well, in his, I don't want to get ahead of myself here, because I'm trying to present these separately so there's less confusion. But in the, the last paragraph of his August 9th letter to me says, "As stated in our July 19th denial letter, if you feel agreed by this decision, you have the right to appeal to the town of Abingdon zoning board of appeals. You may also file on your client's behalf to the zoning board for a special permit pursuant to Section 17532, which is the accessory apartment." I'll get into more about the accessory apartment special permit towards the end of my presentation, but for right now, I'm concentrating in asking you to focus on the appeal of the denial of this building permit for an accessory structure. So the question the board has to figure out is, is this an accessory building under the definitions of the bylaw? And we allege yes, and we think it's, it's pretty clear. If you look at the floor plan, as I was just mentioning, on Exhibit D and E, you can see there is no bedroom, and there is no cook, permanent cooking facilities in there. That's not what they asked for. That's not what they planned to do. In F, I just read you the definition of an accessory building, and the cabana that's existing there now, the screened house, the screened cabana, is an accessory building, and their proposed new cabana is an accessory building. Now compare that to the definition of a dwelling unit, which is also, I gave to you in Exhibit F. Under the same Section 1754, dwelling unit is defined as one or more living or sleeping rooms arranged for the use of one or more individuals living as a single housekeeping unit with permanent provisions for cooking, living, sanitary, eating, and sleeping facilities, all five. The word "and" is used in our bylaw. If you have all five of those, it is a dwelling unit. Your typical apartment, your typical single-family home, has permanent provisions for cooking, living, sanitary, eating, and sleeping facilities. The proposed cabana that the McMenamins asked for a building permit did not have those five. They only had three. They had a living room area. They had sanitary, which is plumbing, which connects to the main house. And they had an eating area, the kitchenette, but they did not have a bedroom, which is a permanent sleeping facility, and they did not have permanent cooking facilities. There's no stove. There's no range. The only thing that was in there was a microwave, which is not a permanent cooking facility. I think many of you probably have seen other properties in Abington and other towns that have pool cabanas. Some of them are used for storage. Some of them are used for changing rooms. Some of them will have a half bath in there, so again, the kids don't have to run into the house. Some of them have bars set up. Some of them have couches with televisions. There's all sorts of things, but is, the question is, is it an accessory building? Is it an accessory use? By the very definition in our bylaw, and by the plans that were submitted, and what you have in front of you, it is an accessory building, and it is not a dwelling unit. It does not have the five required permanent facilities. There's no permanent facility for sleeping, and there's no stove, range, no cooking. So by definition, that cabana, again, is not a dwelling unit. So Mr. McMenamin was obviously frustrated and came to me and said, they're, they're telling me that they're not going to approve my permit. What do I have to do? And I went and talked to some of the people in the building department, expressed our opinion as to why, and it came back that they thought it could be used as a house. It could be used as a dwelling unit sometime in the future. And I said, well, that's against the law, because we weren't, we wouldn't, we're not asking for a special permit at that time for an in-law apartment, accessory apartment. If someone tried to convert an attic, a garage, a cabana to an apartment without a permit from this board and from the building department, you can be fined. It's subject to inspection, and we said, inspect us anytime. He is a very successful businessman, and he wanted to have a nice cabana, so when he's up here during the summers with his grandkids, he has a place to hang out with them. He can get out of the house if the kids are in the house, or vice versa. It's a place for his family to enjoy on 14 acres of land. Unfortunately, the, the building department issued their July 19th letter, which is at Exhibit C. And I need to say for the record, this was about less than a week after the current building inspector was hired. He wasn't part of the initial discussions, excuse me, and review. But the letter came out, and the letter dated July 19th, in address to the McMenamins, quotes again the same sections that I just quoted, the definition of a dwelling unit, and it lists the five permanent provisions that are required. And then it listed the, the section of our bylaw that says you can't have two dwelling units on a lot, because you'd have two, two principal buildings on a lot. Unless it's considered an accessory apartment under 17532. Put that aside for now. But the last sentence is the kicker. The building department said, "It has been term, it has been determined, the proposed project meets the criteria of another potential dwelling unit on said property, where only one principal structure is permitted on a single lot. Based on this determination, the application's been denied." And Mr. McMenamin was speechless. It was denied because they said it has the potential to be a dwelling unit. I wrote a letter back and introduced myself to Mr. Carmichael, which is a nice guy, and I, in my letter, I apologize that his first introduction to me was a letter appealing a letter that he had just been asked to sign. But my letter was dated July 22nd. The denial letter came out on July 19th, and under the law, we have 30 days to appeal to the zoning board, to file an appeal. Instead, I wrote a letter to Mr. Carmichael, and if you don't mind, I'd like to read some excerpts for the record. "My law office represents the above referenced property owner applicants, and I've been provided with a copy of a certain letter dated July 19th, 2022, from your office, which bears your signature. The letter was a written denial of my client's application for a building permit to construct an octagonally shaped cabana defined in our zoning bylaws as an accessory structure adjacent to their existing swimming pool patio. The cabana was proposed, proposed to be situated to the rear of the existing single-family home on the 11-inch compostal of land owned by my clients. Mr. and Mrs. Barry McMenamin have been very successful in business, and they are approaching their retirement with a desire to enjoy life, enjoy their life with their family, including their grandchildren. Barry and Jean spend winters in Florida and their summers in Abington. Three generations have lived and will continue to live in their family home at 9 Hunts Pond Lane, and an 800 square foot cabana was intended to be a physically separate quote man cave, which the McMenamins could use apart from the main house and as a focal point for family parties in the summer. I understand that you were only recently appointed as a building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer, and therefore I'm troubled that my first contact with you is this letter of complaint. However, a cabana is not a dwelling unit, no matter how big, how small, or how luxurious. And I believe that you've been given some poor advice in your office, and I ask you to review and reconsider. The denial letter is based on blatantly tenuous and unsupportable grounds." And I then state what I just read about the potential dwelling unit language. "Thus, the denial of my client's building permit application is based on unwarranted suspicion and determination that the proposed cabana has the potential to be converted into a dwelling unit sometime in the future." That explanation alone makes no sense, because by definition, if the proposed cabana building cannot be classified as a dwelling unit now, if your office is admitting that it has the potential to possibly become a dwelling unit, then it's not a dwelling unit. It's an accessory structure. As your denial letter correctly quoted, the zoning bylaws define a dwelling unit as one or more living and sleeping rooms arranged, blah, 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 with permanent provisions for cooking, living, sanitary, eating, and sleeping facilities. An objective review of the attached plans for the cabana clearly indicates there are no cooking facilities, i.e. no stove, no oven. There are no sleeping facilities. Therefore, by definition, the proposed cabana cannot be classified as a dwelling unit." I'll skip down. "Any distrust or suspicions of the potential future of this cabana are not sufficient or supportable grounds for denial of this permit. Otherwise, the building department would have to deny a building permit for every proposed quote-unquote finished basement, for every garage with a room above or storage above, or for every oversized shed or accessory building designed by a resident property owner." Because upon the reasoning and basis for our denial, for my client's project, all of the above examples, a finished basement, a garage, a storage, oversized storage shed, all of those examples have the potential to someday be converted into a dwelling unit. But the town does not have the right to deny a building permit application because of any suspicions or distrust that one resident, of one resident, but not another. Instead, the town has the authority and the legal right to fine and enforce its bylaws in the event that any property owner illegally creates a new dwelling unit without first attaining appropriate permits. I mentioned that there are other examples in town, buildings, accessory structures that are larger than what we are proposing, and they've been approved, and they've been giving their building permit. We respectfully request that you review the file and rescind the denial letter dated July 19th, and after confirming that all the required documentation has been filed and fees have been paid, we ask that you issue a building permit to allow the McMenamins to move forward with the installation of the desired cabana. If you'd like to meet me and discuss this matter in more detail, I'm always willing to do so if it might help to resolve the issues in a more expedient manner, and I asked them to respond within 10 days, only because I had my, my 30-day clock was rolling. We did talk, I believe, by phone. And then Mr. Carmichael emailed me a second letter dated August 9th, in which he basically confirmed the prior letter, saying, "We think it's a dwelling unit." And again, recited the definition of a dwelling unit, and as I mentioned previously, his, he ended with, "You can appeal this to the zoning board. You can also apply for a special permit to make it an in-law. Whichever way you guys want to go, I'll review your decision, and if we go with the in-law, he'll review those plans." That's how we get here. Again, the definition speaks for itself. I have copies of, and I'd like to share them with you, for the record. Some other properties in town. Just so you know, this is not an aberration.
I can think of a few myself, sir.
This is one that has, and I'm not gonna say the property addresses of the This is one that has several detached buildings.
Yeah, I voted on this one.
And I'm not saying they're bad votes. I think they're all appropriate votes. This is another one that has an 1,168 square foot garage and kind of workshop. Again, ours is 840.
Well, what I think really might throw people off is, is Well, what I think really might throw people off is the design of it, and also, I did see-
This one I want to show you. This one is two-story, over 1,000 square feet footprint that was approved, rightfully so. It's an accessory building. The footprint's about half the size of the existing house.
Right, yeah, and that's what I was about to say with this. I mean, it's a-
I'm asking the zoning board to read the definition of dwelling unit and read the definition of accessory building. If you look at what was submitted, we applied for an accessory building. We applied for a cabana. There's no limit to the size of a cabana or a shed. There are limits, as you have to keep it 10 feet off the lot lines, you can't, whatever the size building is, if it is a true accessory building, can't cover more than 20% of the backyard. We have 11 acres. It complies in every way. You know, I would ask that the board finds that the requested cabana, which is shown, again, in the D and E, is, in fact, complies and satisfies the definition of accessory structure and does not fit in the definition of a dwelling unit.
I think the confusion kind of comes with, you know, your exhibits D and H.
Yep.
It's the exact same footprint, and I mean, the only thing you did was, you took out the drawings of, you know, a bike and a treadmill-
Yep.
-and just called it a bedroom.
And that was not before the building department, the in-law apartment. The only thing that was before the building department was the cabana.
Oh, I know, but I'm saying, I think, as you can see, you just simply wrote bedroom instead of putting exercise room, and it's the exact-
Oh, is it, yeah, you can-
The exact same footprint, the kitchen, there's no difference to the kitchen.
If you look at-
No, there is a difference to the kitchen, let me clarify that.
I mean, I know it says kitchen and kitchenette, but there's no-
No, no, here's the difference. If the McMenamins desire to make this an in-law apartment as opposed to their original current design of a cabana, which is on file at the building department, there is no application downstairs for an in-law apartment yet. If we were to change this building into an in-law apartment, they could change the size if they wanted to, but they're proposing not to. They don't need a bigger building. So they're right, you're changing the use, because they have to have a permanent bedroom. So they have to get rid of, they're going to delete the exercise room and make that the bedroom. The kitchen has to be revised and upgraded, because now you have to change the wiring in that kitchen, because you're going to need more substantial wiring for a stove or for a range. You're also going to take out what is right now going to be a bar sink, it's going to be more of a kitchen sink, so a little bit of different plumbing. There's going to be some updates and changes. They may decide, assuming the board approves the in-law apartment, and I think you should, that they still want to just do the cabana because they don't want to spend the money for the upgrade. Again, they're here half the year, but they have the right to apply for it if they'd like to, and it's their decision whether they want to exercise it. So in front of you right now, and what I'm talking to you right now about is the denial of a building permit for the accessory structure as shown in C and D. Does what is shown there comply with the definition of accessory structure, or does it comply with all the requirements of dwelling unit? I don't think there's really a debate when you read the wording. That's not, that's not C and D right there.
No, that's, that's H.
I guess what it comes down to is, we can't really look at what it possibly could be. We have to look at what you want, and what they want, is the cabana. I don't understand why we would have to give them the in-law. I don't understand that. I mean, we should just go with what they originally asked for.
Well, he's still got to keep going. Well, I've applied for it.
You could deny it.
You can, yeah, you need a reason to deny, and we'll get to that presentation-
We'll deny because that's what you asked, we could deny because that's what you asked for originally is this.
No, this, before the zoning board tonight, are three applications. One-
No, there was two.
Nope, three. And if you look at my application, number one, appeal the building inspector's decision dated 7/19, which deemed the proposed cabana to be a dwelling unit, not an accessory building. Number two, special permit under 17532I to allow an accessory apartment. Number three, special permit under 17535 to allow the cabana footing site prep in the floodplain overlay district. There is a fourth one, which is the waiver of the environmental impact statement, which is related to three. So we paid the permitting fees, I mean, sorry, the application fees for the three different applications, the appeal, the special permit for the floodplain, and the special permit for the in-law.
Okay, but we can deny one and just pick two.
They're separate decisions.
We can.
For good cause.
Do we all have a-
Good cause.
Do we all have a good understanding of what he's asking for, because we have to actually ask if there's any other public comment before we-
Well, it's all one, so he can keep going, he has to sort the couple of-
However you want me to do it, you want me to-
No, no, I think we should get through it all and then-
The other things you're asking for, in addition to that distinction between accessory and in-law or-
Right. So let me do the last one next, which is easy, is the floodplain, the special permit for the floodplain. Whether it's a cabana or whether it's an in-law apartment, as you just said, it's the same structure. It's going in the same location, it's in the local floodplain, floodplain wetlands protection overlay district, which, as you know, is half the town. The plan shows you, however, it is not in the wetlands, we're not filling any wetlands, it's not in a FEMA flood zone, it's already in a disturbed lawn area where the existing screened cabana is. So one of the reasons we, the town requires a special permit when you're doing work in a floodplain is because you want to look at, are there going to be any elevation changes that might flood a neighbor? Are you changing things that could affect water going into a neighbor's yard? Again, we're on 14 acres of land. What we're proposing doesn't change any elevations, doesn't affect any wetlands whatsoever. For that reason, we would ask you to approve the special permit to build in the floodplain, and also grant the waiver of the environmental impact statement, because there is no environmental impact, and I think it's all shown pretty clearly on the plan. Now let me move on to the other special permit, which is the special permit for the in-law apartment under Section 17532I. That has requirements also. An in-law apartment is a separate dwelling unit, but with a restriction that it has to be, it can only be used and occupied by a family member. Right? And that's what we are asking for. We are not asking for a second apartment, we're asking for an accessory apartment, which colloquially we call the in-law apartment. The proposed floor plan, which we have not yet submitted to the building department, is shown in the attachments I gave you, showing the bedroom, showing the permanent cooking facilities, the permanent sleeping facilities, the permanent living facilities, all five of the elements of a dwelling unit. So it complies with the definition of a dwelling unit. It also complies with the size restrictions under 17532I. So it complies in every regard. So we would ask, and it's all, all the utilities and meters are everything connected to the main house, so there's no overload of anything, there's plenty of parking down here in 14 acres and a long driveway. So everything, check off every box that an in-law apartment would be allowed upon your grant of the special permit and upon the McMenamins' decision whether to exercise it. As I think the board's aware, anytime this board grants a variance or a special permit or a finding, the property owner is not then obligated to go build the project. It's their decision, but they have to follow up with the procedure, wait for the appeal period, get a certified, test a copy of the decision, record it at the registry deeds, file it with the building department, and then submit your building plans for approval.
Can I ask one question? It's very unusual to me, at least on this board, because I've been on it for a while, to see someone ask for it one way and then another way.
This is very unusual. You're right. I don't think it should have gotten this far.
Right, but it has. I mean, has Amy looked at this at all? Because, I mean, you are asking for a lot. You're asking, you're asking for all your cake here and eating it too. You know, the building inspector denied you for whatever reason, and now you're asking for it to be a cabana, or it can be an in-law.
Right, and if you were to approve both of those special permits, and I think we have complied with all of the requirements for both of those special permits, the McMenamins have to decide they can only exercise one of them, obviously. If they exercise the in-law apartment, they don't, they don't need a building permit for the accessory building. And the opposite is true. If they exercise their right to get the building permit for the accessory building, it can't be an in-law apartment.
And as I would say to you guys, this is the first time, so many, I mean, as long as I've been on the board, I mean, this might be something that Amy should look at first before we vote on it, just to make sure that we have the right to give those decisions. Or we can vote on this, we can cut it up, we can vote on all three of them, or we can deny one and vote, you know what I mean, and vote on the other.
Grant one-
One of them and not the other, yes.
And continue another one to give Amy time to review.
Well, I think Amy should look at the whole thing first before we do anything. That's my personal opinion, because I've never seen this before, okay? I'm just saying, in my opinion, I've never seen-
Usually we have ask-and-answer kind of-
It's like a residential house, I want to build a garage on this piece of property, or I want to buy, build a house on this park.
Well, one of the reasons we did this is-
You get denied.
Right, and if this board did not overrule the decision and said, "We're not going to give you the building permit for an accessory structure," as the building inspector himself said, "You could apply for an accessory apartment." Instead, you have a special permit for that. So I'll apply, because I don't know what you're going to do. I'm hoping you approve both, and it becomes a McMenamin's decision. If you deny one or the other, they reserve the right to appeal it.
Right.
I don't want to go with-
Yeah, exactly, right.
Besides H, is there any other plans if this was to be an in-law apartment?
No, that would be the structure. It's a prefabricated structure, comes in two pieces, boom, it's down.
Yeah, but I'm saying, like, so, I mean, this doesn't show, there's no bedroom on this.
On, um-
Let's just say this. No, it says bedroom, but there's no closet.
Let's just say this, if somebody was going to come in front of us to put an in-law, which we have on the agenda today, they come into us with that one project, it's already built, they want to make it an in-law.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're giving them the opportunity to do either or, which is-
Well, no, I'm just wondering if we can even, I mean, usually we don't vote unless we have an actual drawing. We don't even have a bedroom to vote on for the in-law apartment. It says bedroom, but it doesn't have a closet, so it doesn't have an official drawing.
There would be a complete set of building permit drawings going down to the building permit with much more detail, structural details-
No, I know that, but usually we wouldn't vote on something like that until we could actually see.
We can, well, we can take this in order, I think.
Or we could ask for council to let us have our lawyer look at it first before they make any votes. We can ask him, he doesn't have to.
But his 30 days to appeal would still stand, right?
Yeah, I had to file the appeal, so we reserve that right.
I just would feel better if we could have Amy take a look at this and just give us some direction here, because again, it is a denial from the building inspector. He's not here today either, he usually is. And I can understand, I read the whole thing, I do understand all that. It's that it's a little bit, and you even admitted yourself, it's a little unusual.
I've never had to appeal a building permit before.
Right, exactly, okay.
I don't understand the rationale.
I know, I would, well, that's your opinion, you did, you wrote it up, you wrote it up, that's for sure, I did read it, and I understand what you're saying, and I understand what he's saying. Maybe it's another one of the bylaw things we need to, you know. But my gut feeling is that we let Amy take a look at this, run through it, and possibly continue it, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, the other option, my client apologized for not being here. He actually, they took his grandkids to Disney World, so-
Awesome, which is there.
Couldn't cancel that for this hearing, sorry, but I told them I couldn't postpone it because we had the 30 days.
Right, yeah.
You could, well, first of all, you could grant all three as we've requested. You could continue all three as you're talking about. You could, one option may be, if the accessory apartment, no, sorry, not the accessory apartment, if the accessory, the building permit denial of the accessory structure, if you find that what was submitted is an accessory structure and the building permit should issue, and you also approve the special permit to work on the floodplain, and continue the in-law apartment one, have Amy review it, that's fine. I'll talk to my client, too, and see-
What he's going to do.
They've approved the accessory for the cabana. Do you want to continue pursuing the in-law, and we'll see, we'll talk to you in, or I would, we'll talk to you in November? Or-
I would rather just wait till Amy takes a look at this and then come back and kick the can around, because again, it's a little unusual. I mean, that's my thought, it's up to you, but I understand what you're saying, believe me, but it's unusual, and anything like this, I'd like to see the town council take a quick look at it, so let us know her opinion, and, because it's a denial, and it's an in-law apartment, and, you know, the rest of stuff is not a problem, but it seems to be, we, I really think that it would be smart that we-
So do you object to that if we postpone it, continue it to the November 10th meeting?
No, I want to do it right, if you guys want to do it right. I have no problem with that. I think everything in front of you satisfies everything we need to do.
Not saying you do a good job and everything, but I understand all the issues, and I just want her to take a look at this, make sure that we're doing the correct thing on this.
Not a problem. I will let my client know when he returns that we'd be on the agenda for November, whatever it is, and if you want to put this towards the end, that's fine, so other people don't have to listen to this all over again, that'd be, that's fine with me.
And we should vote on continuing it, correct?
Yeah.
Do we have to open it to the public first?
We're continuing it, right?
We're continuing it, I don't think we need to, right?
You can ask for comments from the public now, it's an open public hearing. I don't know if anyone's here for this.
Yeah, all right, so I guess at this time, we're going to open it to the floor, if anyone has any comments or questions or concerns. Looking around, looks like nobody does, so maybe we can make a motion. Oh, yeah, bring it back, and we're going to close it.
Not going to close the hearing now.
Close the opening, right, to the floor.
I move that we close the-
Not the hearing.
Not the hearing, the, we can, all we have to do is continue it.
Right, exactly.
I move that we continue this until the November 10th meeting, in order for town council to help us respond appropriately.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
All those in favor?
Thank you. I don't know if you can answer this. How does it work now? Who gets in touch with town council?
We will.
Mr. Carmichael?
Bill, you get ahold of her and show her the package, and thank you.
Yeah, I'm sure if she has questions, you can call me if I'm missing anything. Whatever you say, Mr. Mullin, we'll be there.
So it's continued to November 10th, Thursday, November 10th, at 7:25 PM.
Okay, great. Hold on all your paperwork, all right? So I have to keep making more copies for next-
Oh, right, definitely, definitely.
Thank you.
All right, so we move on to our next petition. Read the petition aloud. The Town of Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, October 13th, 2022, at 7:10 PM at the Abington Town Office, 500 Glenowich Way, Abington, on the petition of Robert English LLC at 2 Columbia Road, Suite 2 Pembroke, for a special permit under 175-35 to construct a single-family home on each of the lots in the floodplain wetlands protection district at Lot 3B and 3C, Robert English Lane. The property is located on Accessors MAF 38, Lots 20 and 21, in the R30 zone.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Attorney Sean Riley, 500 Washington Street, and I am here representing the applicant, Robert English LLC, the principal of which is Mr. Jason Kennedy, who is seated in the front row to the right. Mr. Kennedy has had construction experience in Abington previously. This is, if you recall, I was here about two months ago, asking for the same special permit for Lot 3A. Mr. Kennedy is, has a potential purchase of the remaining lots, 3B, C, D, and E, which is subject to his ability to get this special permit, obviously. He wants to make sure all the permits are there before he purchases the property. It's pretty much an identical application with, identical to the previous one for Lot 3A, where we showed you a copy of the plan that shows the topography, especially, I'd point out to Exhibit C, which is the plan that was approved by the planning board and the conservation commission several years ago. So the roadway that you see there, the cul-de-sac, has not yet been constructed. It is currently owned by Mentocorp. It was formerly owned by the Rourke Brothers. The Rourke Brothers sold it to Mentocorp, and Mentocorp is now contemplating a sale to Mr. Kennedy's company, which he's called Robert English LLC. It's a special permit to build a single-family house on a lot that conforms with all dimensional requirements. The wetlands are in the rear. You can see the proposed topography. We're required to submit a plan that shows two-foot contours. We, this plan actually shows one-foot contours. Those proposed dwellings are the approximate- Those proposed dwellings are the approximate size and and area. So if you were to approve this special permit, I'd ask you to do the same you did with Three A., that you approve it in substantial conformity with the submitted plans. So that if Mr. Kennedy's buyers want to square off that house or whatever, it's pretty much going to be, that's where the houses will go due to setbacks, and they want to obviously stay away from the wetlands that are out to the rear of those lots. There's not much to this application, other than the need for the special permit. Mr. Kennedy is here to answer any questions, I'm here to answer any questions, but I think we have submitted all the documents that are required for the board to review and approve the special permit. But if you have any questions.
Yeah, I watched the planning board, and you had, you had said something about a covenant, covenant?
A restrictive covenant, I mean, I'm sorry.
Is that, is that taken care of, or?
Yeah.
Is it, is it filed?
Yeah.
Did everyone get a copy of it, or?
Yeah.
I I just don't see it here.
The, no, well, it's not necessary for the zoning board, it's, it's, it's not a when, when a subdivision.
I just know there's a lot of problems, yeah, I was watching.
From a prior owner.
Right, I remember, no, I remember, no, I was just watching.
For people who are listening.
Right.
When a subdivision plan is approved, typically, a, what they call a covenant, is recorded that says, you're not going to sell any of these lots until you build, build the road first, to the satisfaction of the planning board. Really, it's for the planning board and the fire department. They're not going to let you start putting up houses unless there's a, the fire hydrants in, unless there's a base coat, you know, a way to get fire departments in and out. That's what the covenant basically does. For whatever reason, when that plan was recorded, they made a note to a previously recorded covenant, they should have recorded a new covenant for this plan for Three A, B, C, D, and E.
And you took care of that, or?
Because my client was buying Three A., I'm now stuck with Jason buying the rest of them.
Okay.
And I said, this is a problem that we need to fix before we, anybody goes further. So yes, we met with the planning board, they reviewed it, that covenant has been, has been recorded at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds.
Okay, anybody want to read what the, the building inspectors had to say?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think with, you know, we talk about this all the time, with all the new buildings that are coming up. It also has to be approved by the sewer commission at the, you know, regular scheduled meeting, because as of right now, you know, there's been some.
The water commission, right.
With the water and.
Yeah, both water and sewer has to be approved, you want to get a building permit.
That's right here, did you want to read that?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
One other thing that zoning enforcement people were wondering about is the W P A forms, the order of conditions submitted with the application pages eleven and twelve, eleven of twelve. The bullet point, or the signatures are made, it says that this order is valid for three years unless otherwise specified as a special condition pursuant to general conditions number four from the date of issuance, the date of issuance is March second, twenty eighteen.
Mm-hmm.
And the question for them is, is.
Has it expired?
Has the order of conditions expired?
Good question, typically after three years it expires, unless there's a request to the conservation commission to issue an extension. In this case, due to COVID and the state laws, all permits were automatically extended, so it's still a valid permit. I think by the.
Until when?
I don't exactly know. To to follow in my point, I was talking to Jason's conveyance attorney and Mr. Mento, Mr. Mentocorp's attorney, I actually noted, I said, we want the planning board issue resolved, and I want you to look at the order of conditions, because we want them to go get an extension, to make sure that's allowed, because it's going to take him a year or two to build the road and the houses up.
You know, date certain. You want, you want to come up and just?
Mr. Kennedy, come on up.
How you doing?
Jason Kennedy, Robert English L L C., we did have the order of conditions extended for one year by the Conservation Commission.
One year, so, is that nineteen?
They figured out when it, because of the COVID extension from when it was going to expire, and I think it was about a month and a half ago that that was extended for one year. I don't have the.
So it was eighteen, and now it's nineteen, and then three years?
No, it was issued in eighteen, so it was three years, so goes to twenty-one.
Right.
Then it gets extended again to twenty-two. But the Conservation Commission can extend for up to three years, I believe, so it's, that's another issue and another board that we're addressing to clean up the title issues. So his agreement to buy is subject to the planning board covenant getting resolved, which we just did, the special permit to issue to build the floodplain, which is yours, and then to review anything we need from the Conservation Commission regarding.
They'll whack you on that one, right, they're going to, they'll let you.
Well, we're going to make sure everything's in place before he buys or before my other client buys.
And they were looking for some certified plot plans for the two proposals, and also they haven't met with you, I guess, yet, so.
No, nothing's been filed yet for all these reasons.
Right, okay.
He hasn't, doesn't own the property yet.
All right, okay, yeah. All right, so that's, all right, I got, got at that point.
Just want to re-read this again. If you could put conditions on a decision that would require them to submit the certified plot plans and to meet with the building department.
Yeah, yeah, if you want to.
Yeah, it's, it's required to get a building permit anyhow, so.
That's good.
Whether you say it or not, it's, it's there.
All right, okay.
Anything else you wanted to?
I can't think of anything else, and I'm sure you've heard enough of me already.
So there's no road there now, correct?
That's right.
There's no road, it's going to be built, these are going to be kind of like facing the high school, when I remember, the field?
No, the, the backyards will, will be.
Yeah, right, that's what I meant, excuse me, the, the land itself. Is, does anyone else on the, around there? I mean, is this all, all these lots?
All the lots in the cul-de-sac.
Are all bought?
No, Rourke Brothers sold those four lots and the roadway land to Mentocorp, who now has a proposal to sell that project.
Okay, all right.
To Mr. Kennedy.
All right, got you.
But not until everything's cleaned up.
Yeah, it's a mess from what the, I was watching the point.
You get that.
He said it was a big mess, so hopefully you can straighten it all out.
Yep.
All right, so we'll open it, is there anyone else here who would like to speak on it? Go up to the microphone and.
Phil, I've done. Mike, that is a great performance. Pleased to meet you.
My name is Mike Masterson, I own the property at Four McHugh Circle. I am pro-business, pro-growth, just so you all know, I'm not looking to destroy this by any stretch, you could put a high rise in there, I don't care, okay? My concern is, they built Seventy-eight Crabtree, which abuts my property, and I was here for that meeting, the assessors meeting. And I made a comment about a hydro geological study, had it been done, the answer was no, and yet the conservation approved the, the building and so forth. I have an in-ground pool on my property, it's a line-up pool, not a gun, eight feet deep. My concern was, any issues with the water table have any effect on my pool? At the time, short answer was no. My eight-foot pool is now four feet eleven. I lost thirty-eight inches in my pool. My concern is that there are a couple of streams that go through that property, and as long as that's addressed, and they don't change their runoff from those streams, I have no problem with it. My property also has a drainage easement right on my backyard. It's part of my property, which takes runoff from the road, which, in my opinion, is a third stream or third axis of water draining into that area. Now, I walked the property earlier today, I walked down that little road they cleared, I could see the survey stakes and so forth. It's pretty dry right now, it's been dry all summer. Now, we did have quite a bit of rain the last month or so, but just to make it clear, if you could get up Map Thirty-eight and possibly Map Forty-four, I could show you visually what I'm talking about, but.
It is.
Oh, you have it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you on the right or left?
No, I'm, I'm on. Okay, I'm, I'm right here, this is me, right here, one twenty-seven A. Now, here's the issue, these dotted lines are the streams.
So if you're looking on the assessors plan that's attached to my application?
Yeah.
He is Lot One Twenty-seven A. on the, based on the southern side of McHugh Circle?
Uh, east, 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 this is east, I mean, this is west side, yeah, so the high school's here, right.
Right. Yeah, I mean, if you're holding a piece of paper.
Oh, oh, holding a piece of paper?
From the bottom of McHugh Circle.
Yeah.
Do you see where he is at One Twenty-seven dot A.? The second house in on the right of McHugh Circle?
Yeah, I see it, mm-hmm.
Okay.
Lot Five, correct?
I can't, it's One Twenty-seven A. Say Lot Five in there?
I don't see Five.
You looking over at that?
Yeah.
Yeah, right there, that's it.
Yeah.
No, looking at that, yeah, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
This is not exactly what you folks know, it's just one issue, it's just, the drainage easement is on my property.
Oh, I see it, yep.
Okay, it also shows it goes into my neighbor's property.
Right.
Which it does not, it ends on my property, the, the lines are not quite, right there. Now, if you look towards the high school side of that drainage easement, you see a dotted line, that's a stream.
Up top, yep.
Okay, there's another stream, comes from the high school property and runs down towards Robert English as well. Now, the stream that comes out of my, my, the drainage easement is street runoff, and it's not shown on this map, but it's, it could be knee-deep, six feet wide in the springtime during the snow melting. I mean, it's moving. Moves enough that it, the first stream I described, that almost touches that easement, continues to Crabtree and goes underneath a bridge at that double circle they put in there between Crabtree and Bayberry. There's a bridge there, and the water comes underneath that bridge, which is running right now, today. Okay, however, it's not making its way down to me yet, because the water, the land is absorbing it. Okay, you can, if you walk the property, you can see the exposed roots, the rocks and so forth from the faucet, the water running through there. My concern, my only concern is, I want to keep my pool, I'm okay with the four feet, ten inches, because I've got young grandchildren and it's fine for them. Okay, my only concern is water in my basement. I have never had water in my basement, ever. Okay, I bought the property in two thousand and eleven, it was built in two thousand and five, previous owner, never had water. I have a finished basement, so I'm okay with all this, as long as someone can kind of assure me there be no adverse effects. Yeah.
Quick answer, yes.
So.
The, so when the prior owners submitted the definitive subdivision plan to build Robert, Robert English Lane, the town engineer, it was designed by an engineer, and they do have a culvert, so the wetlands are connected, nothing is being blocked. There's a culvert, there are catch basins, there are drainage easements.
I understand, that culvert had been there for years, is that the one you're talking about, it's got like a little catch basin with about, geez, I don't know, twenty four-inch pipe that goes through it?
Probably, it's not completed.
Right, that's above grade.
Yeah, it's not.
Way above grade.
That's where he is trying to buy the property to take over.
I understand that, that was put in when they started developing McHugh Circle, and they dug a trench and bermed it. These streams are on the other side of that berm, and where the machine went in there to take the trees out, the stream is no longer there. So my concern is water backing up, I'm upstream of that. I don't want that to turn into a fertile pond, to the point where the trees lose their breath from as they blow over in storms, they aqua, okay? That is a wet area, there's no question about it.
Right.
Okay, if you just, if you just walk through it, you'd know, you've got to bring a pair of boots with you.
In this green right here, I colored it in so you could see the wetland area.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what about your name?
Mike.
Mike, Mr. What?
Masterson.
Masterson, sorry.
Pleasure, Mr. Riley.
All right, yeah, sorry.
No, that, that's a very good drawing of that, that's exactly what it is.
Right, and that's where, so again, when Rourke submitted this roadway plan to the planning board, their engineer designed it to perform the stormwater management, to do the drainage where it's supposed to be done. The town's engineer reviewed it, made it, made it, required any changes that had to be changed before it could get approved, and it was, so it was looked at by the two engineers. That's the extent of my knowledge, because I wasn't involved with that subdivision.
Right, right.
But knowing that it's an approved definitive subdivision plan means the engineering was approved.
That culvert you put in is down here.
Okay, yeah, and I think.
Not back here.
Because that's not built, the road's not.
I, no, well, what I'm saying is that culvert's there, but it's, it's above grade, four feet, and the stream is down on the west side of that, which is all of this. So the culvert's down here. So Mr. Kennedy, whoever's going to build this, they're going to need to do some type of bridge and easement to let the water drain. That water ends up flowing out towards the back of Barry, joins up with the stream coming out of the high school area, and goes underneath Shawrap towards the Ozzy Authority.
I used to live on Pinecrest.
Okay, so you know.
Play in the woods, yeah.
But, but that's, but that's.
Yeah, no, I agree.
And that water can get running.
And again, this roadway is not built yet, so the drainage system's not.
I, I understand that, I understand.
One of the retention funds is partially in place at that corner lot.
Right.
But all of that, that has not yet been connected, obviously, to the street drains.
Right, no, I, I, I know, yes, I'm with you, I understand all that, I get it.
So I want to reassure you that the wetlands that are connected now will remain connected, they have to remain connected, or it's a violation of the engineering and conservation.
That's my only concern.
Yep, no, it's a.
As long as nothing changes, I'm okay with my four-foot-eleven pool and a dry basement, that's all I want.
Because hopefully if this all works out, Mr. Kennedy.
Well, obviously, you have a problem now for it, I mean.
That's what, that's my concern.
So when did that happen? I mean, when did?
That happened, well, I covered a pool in the fall, the foundation went in.
I mean, like.
Oh, within, within six, eight months.
Of what?
The foundation going in.
Oh, foundation's going where?
At Seventy-eight Crabtree.
Oh, okay, of, of the.
It abuts my property.
All right, okay.
So we are on the other, these lots that we're here for tonight are on the other side of.
Yeah, I see them, yep.
Yeah, no, I, I saw, I walked it, that they're in here, I understand that.
Yeah.
But, but if the roadway's going to go in here, they've got to make.
Yeah, we're not, he has to, if he buys this property, he has to build a road in accordance with the engineer-approved plans.
Right.
For our purposes tonight, he also has to get a permit to build the houses on those lots.
I, I understand that, and this dry here, this is all dry, I think, it's barely dry, but it's dry, and it's not like, it's just light and clean, but, but that's my only concern, that's all I have.
Yeah, I know, it, it's, it's difficult, because they're going to put a road in, hopefully they don't disturb anything that, that will, you know.
As long as the culvert is some sort of relief for that water, and I, I'm more than As long as the culvert is some sort of relief for that water, and I, I'm more than happy with it and hope Mr. Kennedy makes a ton of dough and, you know, progress, because that's, I'm a capitalist, okay, so I'm, I'm.
Well, you're probably, hopefully, a few months from now, you might see about there.
Well, that's fine. I'm semi-retired, I mean. But no, that, that's just my concern, that I, just, the board can make sure that, according to the plans, that nothing gets disturbed out back, that will be fine.
Good.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Glad to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Mr. Kennedy?
I'm Sean.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this? All right, so at this time, unless, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, uh, we just, thank you for your time.
Yeah, so I guess at this time, we'll close it to the public, back to the board.
To the board.
Yep.
Uh, we were voting on that before, so might as well vote on that.
I move that we close the input from the public on the petition of Robert English LLC for a special permit under 175-35. To construct. That's it? Yep, sorry.
All right, any discussion on it?
Well, so, you realize there are neighbors there, and that was very nice of him to speak up and, you know, give us, you know, it's, it's difficult when you start moving things around and building and, and hopefully, everything is going to go the way it's supposed to go and the neighbors aren't affected. And I know, listening to you, uh, on the planning board side, this place is a mess. And basically, the people before really didn't do what it was supposed to. Yeah, right, it's just a mess, yeah. So, I, I just hope that everything is followed and, uh, and the wetlands stay the way they are and the drainage works, works correctly.
Yep, and Mr. Kennedy, obviously, it's his own best interest to make sure the drainage works for the houses that he wants to sell.
Right.
And for his neighbors. And if he has any, if, if he encounters any issues that he thinks can be improved, he could go back to the planning board with an engineered plan and ask the town engineer to review it. Nothing can be changed from the existing plan.
Yeah.
Unless the planning board approves it, and potentially, the conservation commissioner probably too.
Well, I just hope that, you know, not saying anything about anybody, but, you know, sometimes things, you can see things and.
Right.
You could add more to it and make sure everything works correctly, so you don't have to come back and explain later to the neighborhood. It's a, it's a tough area, a lot of wetlands.
It is. We talked with the conservation department, and we've already ordered the culvert that Mike was referencing to cross the wetlands as well. So, I, I respect his concerns.
Okay.
I believe a lot of that was addressed when the project was approved too, so. Are you leaving the Kansas here?
Yep. All right.
I have a question. As far as, I mean, it seems pretty important, we get the, they call it the, the WPA order of conditions extension made more certain, but is that our purview or is that the conservation commission?
Conservation. Only conservation can issue it.
Right, so we can, we can place that condition, but it places the burden on now.
Yeah, it's a continuing.
Yeah, it's continued on, I mean.
If, if, another crutch for you, so you know, is any building permit that he applies for has to be signed off by the conservation commission. So, if the order has expired or whatever, they won't sign off the building permit.
They won't sign off, yeah.
Right, so, we'll be looking at that before he buys the property.
And also, we brought up the issue, so.
Right.
I think that's what we wanted to bring up.
Right.
Okay, we'll go by what the buyer said, that the conservation has given you another year, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll go by that.
Yeah.
All right, and the issue's been brought up.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll be videoed, so.
And it seems like that's really the, the conservation commission's purview, so they'll, they'll deal with that as they need to.
Yeah.
And so, the other things that the building department brought up were the certified plot plan and the meeting with them at some point, but that.
Yep.
That will come later if we grant this, is that, I understand what you're asking?
Yes, it'll become at the time of the building department, again, if he consumates the purchase.
Yes, okay.
This is a step towards that. Oh, yeah, then.
Make sure the ducks are right.
He's got a lot of hoops to jump over. Yours is like the third.
Yeah, and that's what the, that's what the planning board said too, that they wanted to make sure that we knew about the conditions and everything that were going on. I, I watched it, so.
How'd I do?
It was long. It was very long.
It was long.
Yeah.
It wasn't my problem, but we fixed it.
And you said you didn't want to, you didn't want to get involved from what I remember.
Yep.
All right, so, um.
Any more discussion on that besides?
I think, uh, I think we're good.
All right, do you want to make a motion?
Um, I move that we approve the petition of Robert English LLC to Columbia Road, Suite Two, Pembroke, for a special permit under 175-35 to construct single-family homes on each lot in the Flood Plains Wetlands Protection District at Lot 3B and 3C, Robert English Lane, to be built. The property is located on Accessors Map 38, lots 20 and 21, in the R30 zone, with a couple of conditions, one that there's a certified plot plan, which, you know, obviously, you need that for the building permit, and they meet with the building department. And just note that we make sure the conservation commission stays on top of the WPA order of conditions expiration.
And could I suggest you add again that the lots be developed in substantial conformity with the submitted plans?
Yeah, and the lots be developed in substantial conformity with the existing plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you next month.
Good luck with that. Good luck.
Sorry.
We'll be around the town.
All right. Move on to our next one. We have this, the Town of Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, October 13th, 2022, at 7:15 PM at the Abington Town Offices, 500 Glenowitz Way, Abington, on the petition of Steve O'Shaughnessy, 24 Highland, Highfields Road, for a special permit under 175-32-1, to change the use of a master bedroom suite to an in-law apartment at 24 Highlands Road. The property is located on Accessors Map 9, Lot 16, in the R30 zone. Anyone here who's speaking on that, please come up?
How you doing?
My name is Steve O'Shaughnessy, the owner of the property. So, my request is to take a plan that simply changes the second story of a garage addition I've been building myself, to include a kitchen, which transforms it into an in-law apartment for my older brother and sister-in-law, who want to live in it as a, becoming a snowbirds from Florida, get out of southern Florida in the, about half the year, and, and share the home with me. So, this is a family decision of having them come to live with me. This construction's been going on for some time, and your, the number on the permit are not a typo, it's a very long, maybe I've set a record on the permit, staying open as long as it has, but it's because every bit of it I've been doing myself.
Okay.
Without hiring anyone. Some frame, just from frame to finish.
So, this, this is the, this is the property now?
Yes, that's it.
So, it's pretty much all sealed up and?
That's right.
Yeah.
From the outside, my neighbors look, have thought for years that the property's been finished.
Yeah.
But the inside was a shell, as I chip away at it slowly, so.
So, what is done right now?
So, I have, I have the rough plumbing and heating in and signed off on the permit, and within a couple of weeks, I'll have the electric signed off on the permit, and then I'll have the walls open for inspection of the frame as well, finally. And then, with that, in sign-off, I'll be able to progress to insulation, and then ultimately sheet rock and keep, keep the project going forward.
Is that going to have a separate entrance?
No.
So, it'll be through the main?
Yeah, common, one common entrance, because it's all family, it's all, one, just one entrance.
What is it, oh?
I mean, there are two door, there are multiple doors.
It looks like there's a door to the second bedroom, right? So, there's two ways out, correct? Right. I'm just trying to look at it as the two, two ways out, two.
Yes, there are, so on the.
So, the stairs and then you get the.
At the top of the stairway, what, what you see proposed in the drawing is that there's a doorway that leads between what I'm describing as an office in the drawing and.
Right, the hall.
And one of the bedrooms on the second floor, so it's two ways.
Right, and that's going to be a second egress.
Right, the fire marshal made sure that that was the case.
Excellent, yep. Are you living here now, or?
I am. I lived there from the very beginning, yeah. The, the main house, the original house is, was a good, solid house, built in 1961 or two, and, and so I've had to do major work on the main part, the Cape Cod portion. The, there was a little breezeway and a one-car garage, which I tore down and got rid of, and in place, I put a, a Four Seasons mudroom, which will also have a laundry in it, to bring the laundry up out of the basement, to make it easier for that. And then, passing through there, there's a stairway in the garage that travels up to the second story, that, which will be part of a conditioned space. It's, the garage itself is a garage, but it's also a little woodshop for myself, given what I do for a living. And so, in that woodshop, it will have a separate zone, because I put radiant heat under the concrete slab of the garage when I built it.
Okay.
So, I'll be able to keep that above freezing through the winter.
Okay.
Yeah.
How many square feet is the actual section you want to make the in-law?
It's, it's the second story of the addition, so it's probably about 650 or so, or 700 livable square feet. If I exclude the eve space that, because there's a knee wall I put in, if you exclude the stairway or the garage on the first floor, just the sort of conditioned space that becomes this in-law, is, I'd say, 75% of the second story.
Well, basically, the only change is that you're adding the.
Right, the permit existed for it to be a master bedroom suite from the very beginning.
Yeah, so it doesn't change the building at all.
The only addition is a kitchen. The kitchen is the key.
Yeah, just adding the kitchen.
Right, and while, because, because I, we talked about it, my brother and I, and thought that, well, we have one kitchen that we're, will probably use together at times for privacy sake, they, they thought, can we have our own? And so, I said, I'll, I will try. I will give it my best shot, yeah.
No, I mean, it doesn't seem like it changed as much at all to the, you know, the outside.
Because everything else was there.
As we learned the five things today, right?
Yeah. Right. Yeah, what we learned.
Right. It pretty much covers all of them, when you think about it.
Yeah, no, yeah, it's everything. Anything else you'd like to add on that, or?
No, I think that, uh.
I mean, there is a second floor on this, is that correct? There's a second floor?
Second floor of the main house?
Yep.
Yeah, there are two bedrooms, as originally built in 1961, with windows to the side and to the back.
Yeah.
The back of the house has a full five-pitch dormer that runs the entire width of the house.
Oh, wow.
And so.
So, that was all permitted and everything's legal on that?
Well, that's original construction from 1961. The permitted part is the left side in the image.
Okay.
And the, the little farmer's porch, well, that's the mudroom entrance. It has a full second story, and that's what I'm describing as an office.
Okay.
So, it's a, it's a room, but I'm using it and intend for it to continue to be used as an office, not another bedroom. The bedroom is described in the back of the, the big rectangle of the garage. And then, it leads into a walk, walk-in closet with its own door, as well as the hallway, and then there's a, a master bath as well.
The neighbors have been knocking on the door and saying, when are you going to finish?
Yeah, well, they don't know, because from the outside, it looks finished.
It does.
Yeah. It took, it took finally refinancing and getting some cash out to hire plumbers and electricians, which, as you know, don't come cheap. So, I finally got over that hump.
Well, it seems like a good project.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean.
I mean, it was already approved for the initial shell, so.
Right.
It's just the kitchenette.
Do we have any written up on this at all?
Um, I mean, from the.
Anybody?
Yeah.
The, uh. I said they met, uh, with them and said that we had to, they needed change this in-law. I didn't really say they needed anything more, other than having that discussion and that we would have to allow a change to an in-law apartment if we wanted to.
Yeah.
That's my understanding of what this, these notes are.
It sounds like the water department says it has no bearing on the sewer system, so.
Okay. I went to the, I was, I was told to get the permit for the electrician and plumber I needed to first visit the water department.
Yeah.
And I did, and I paid the required fee, what, I think it's based on a, not necessarily the bath, but a bedroom. I think they run the, as you probably know, the calculation is based on per bedroom. So, I paid that fee and then came over to the zoning commissioner, I guess. Is that right?
Jukebox?
I'm sorry?
Jukebox?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, I restore antique jukeboxes.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Not, not for a living, just as a hobby.
Nice, wow. Anyone else here to speak on that?
Just a quick question. I'm Connie Malouf.
Oh, you want to, sir, you have to, you have to say your name and address.
How you doing?
Good, my name's Connie Malouf. I live at 197 Ashton Street. I bought Steve's property. I, I think you already said, they're still going to enter through the house.
Yes.
That's all it is.
Okay.
That's all it is. Yeah, it's, so it's not going to be a separate apartment, that's all.
No, no.
Great.
No, they wouldn't be allowed in the zone, because it doesn't require a sort of a two-family situation.
Yeah.
It's family entering, not entrance.
And how, how's the parking?
It's good. I've got, I've got enough parking for.
I see, two-car garage, and is there any more?
I don't think, I don't plan on adding anymore.
No?
The, the driveway comes in and turns to the left, where there can be room for two cars, actually off the main bay that comes out.
Okay.
Straight towards the street. So, I designed that to save the tree. There's a maple in the front yard. I didn't want to take down.
Okay.
So, I just curved around behind the maple with the driveway.
All right. So, that would give you like four vehicles.
Oh, yeah.
Safely parked in there.
Yeah, that's right.
All right. Anybody else?
Sorry. All right, I guess there's no one else, and is there nothing else you want to say?
Unless you, I'm happy to answer any additional questions, but.
You guys have any questions for us?
No, just, uh, we're just going to remind them if they get the proof that it's going to, when it's done and they moved in, that they need to notify the town.
Yeah, they have to get a letter of approval every year, just, you know, stating that it's still used for.
Okay.
In-law, in-law apartment.
All right, sure.
All right, so I guess at this point, we'll move to close. Get to the floor.
Motion to close discussion from the public.
So, just one more question.
Sure.
Now, do one more question. So, are you, are you building any more on this, on the outside?
No.
Okay, so, everything I'm looking at right now, all exists.
Right, nothing beyond what is in the drawings that were approved back in 2014. What's yet to be built that is approved is a shed, a little shed roof off the back on top of a concrete pad in the back of the garage.
Oh, I see that, yeah.
Yeah.
But these are dated.
The plans stay exactly the same.
Yes, yes.
It's just internally that it changes.
The only change, and there's no change to the square footage, it's just in that The only change, and there's no change to the square footage, it's just in that square footage.
Yeah, just what you said.
I put two small sort of countertops that could fit in minimalist appliances that would be considered a kitchen.
Yeah, I just look at these and I just, existing house, new, but it's all done.
Yes.
This is all done, on the outside. Okay. Just wanted to double-check before we vote.
Sure, sure.
I move that we close discussion from, input from the public.
Yep. Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
All right, any further discussion?
This looks like a good plan to me.
Yeah, I like it. Yeah.
Just going to get it done.
That's right. I do what I can.
It's only been eight years.
Yeah, we've got an electrician, a really good electrician, and who is almost finished. He should be coming for the inspection within a couple of weeks. And as I understand it, as soon as that's done, I can get the framing inspection, and then I'll be green-lighted to go to insulation.
Okay, so let's, let's vote.
Make a motion?
I move that Zoning Board of Appeals grant petition of Stephen O'Shaughnessy, 24 Highfields Road, for a special permit under 175-32.1 to change the use of master bedroom suite to an in-law apartment at 24 Highlands Road. The property is located on Accessors Map 9, Lot 16, in the R30 zone, and just noting that you have to get an annual, is it a permit?
Notification.
Notification.
To the town.
To the town.
Okay.
So to find that it's family living there.
Okay.
You have to check with them.
A few times this evening, I've heard the description of where I live as Highlands.
Yeah.
It's Highfield, so it may be a title.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. I missed.
It says, it says Highfield.
Highfields?
It says, I probably missed. No, I said, I started to say that too.
All right, sorry about that.
No, no, no.
Highfield's correct.
Modify that to say Highfields Road.
Should have corrected immediately.
Well, it was an earlier correction.
Because this actually reads Highfields Road in one spot and Highlands Road in another.
I wonder, is there a Highlands in Abington? I don't know. Maybe there is.
It's funny, because when I looked at it earlier, I thought it was it too.
Yeah.
So it's not, it is in there?
There's both of them on this notification that I was reading. And I didn't notice it. Thank you for noticing.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
So to be, to be clear, we're, our motion is about 24 Highfields Road.
There we go. Okay. I'll second it. Let's just repeat the address one more time.
24 Highfields Road.
Okay. I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry about that. It is in there? Hopefully, that doesn't come back to bite us, but.
The public hearing notice says Highfields Road.
Okay, great. All right, excellent. Thank you, Mark.
Thanks again, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a letter explaining your next.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Move on to our last one.
I wonder who made that mistake.
Yeah, how many times I erased my.
Next. All right, the town, one, one few too many. The Town of Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, October 13th, 2020, at 7:20 PM at the Abington Town Offices, 500 Glenowitz Way, Abington, on the petition of ID Sign Group, 9 Bristol Drive Eastern, for a sign waiver under 175-58.3 to allow a second sign on the building at 1145B Bedford Street. The property is located on Accessors Map 59, Lot 159, in the HC zone. Does anyone here to speak on?
My name is Bob Christopherley with ID Sign Group, representing Blue Collar. This is Kyle Franzika. He's the tenant that I'm doing business process with. We are applying for a waiver, apparently, to put a second sign on the building. Presently, there's one on the left side of the building from the other tenant, and we want to duplicate it for Blue Collar.
Okay.
It's the same, it's the same size as the other.
Same size as the other?
Exactly, same size.
Pretty much the same size, just a different, you know, whatever your logo is.
Yeah, it's just matching.
Yeah, we're just matching.
So what type of business is this, I was just asking?
Come on up, Kyle.
We do emergency.
Your name?
Oh, sorry. Kyle Franzika. We do emergency vehicle upfitting and commercial truck upfitting. So police fire DPW on all state contracts and the retail side, so plow trucks, construction, things of that nature.
Very good. And what is the other side? What do they do?
He does car audio.
Okay.
Actually, I have my radio fixed though.
Excellent, so that's good. It's great that you.
Nice compliment.
It's nice, good that you come to the town. That's excellent. Are there any other signs? Oakside?
No.
Nothing?
No, there's no streets.
Just those two? Is it lit?
It's going to be lit, yeah.
Lit and?
The other one is lit also.
And do you have the time limits on that? How long it can be lit? You know?
If it requires it, yes, but usually they have a timer or a sensor on these things.
Okay.
You have a timer, you're going to be?
I'm assuming Donnie's is on a timer or a photo cell.
So they probably have it.
So whatever he does, you should do too. It should be like.
Correct. It's going to match.
When you're probably, when you're leaving, they probably shut off. They shouldn't be on all night. That's right off the highway. I mean, 18, correct?
Yeah, it's set back from the road too. I actually drove by there to look at it today. So, yeah.
That's great. Welcome to the town.
Thank you.
Anything else you'd like to add to that? All right. So I guess we can open it to the rest of the public, but it doesn't seem like anybody's here.
Yeah, so we'll close it right up.
Yeah.
I move that we close the discussion from the public on this petition of ID Sign Group.
Second. To the board?